And it is six o'clock. We will call the Monday, April 14th, regular board meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Kevin Jensen.
Here.
Miriam Barbara.
Here.
Bert Richard.
Here.
Nellie Shire.
Here.
Doug Kuchko.
Here.
Diane Cozer.
Here.
Don Kuski.
Here.
Andrew Koop.
Here.
And Phil Henkel.
Here.
And was a proper notice given for this meeting?
Yes, please be advised that public notice to this meeting as required by Sections 19.84 and 65.90, the Wisconsin statutes, has been properly given. Such notice consisted of a notice and agenda to the official newspaper, Rice Lake Chronotype, to the old care leader, and to radio stations WJMC and WAQE indicating the date, time, and place of the meeting. Such notice was given more than 24 hours prior to the meeting.
Thank you. A proper notice was given for this meeting. We'll now stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Not have anyone sign up for appearances, so we will move on to the approval of our regular session meeting minutes from March 24th. Have a motion. Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? See none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the minutes have been approved. Our consent agenda, we have our monthly budget and cash reconciliation report, the monthly board bills. We have eight employment resignations and seven employment recommendations. And I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? See none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the consent agenda has been approved. And that'll move us into our report section, and we'll get started with our online gaming presentation.
So we have our police school liaison officer, Stephanie Bowle, and Andy Jondro. Now, I, this, it's just a PDF, so I'll have to scroll through it for you, so, alright.
So I'm Officer Stephanie Bowle, and I'm a school liaison officer for the elementary high school at Hogg.
I'm Andy Jondro, I'm at the high school at Hogg.
Today, we're going to talk about some of the dangers of online gaming and things to look out for if you're playing online.
And I think this, just to note as well, this was a presentation, maybe a shortened version of it, but can you talk about where you offered this and, because you offered it in a couple of different places?
Yeah, we did this presentation at Hogg, and we did it at Hilltop, and next to Tainer, and then this last Saturday, we did it at this public library. So this is a very, very complex game of it.
Thank you.
This is Stephanie's creation, I'm just a deck man.
So these are some games that we're seeing at the elementary level. Fortnite Farmville, World of Warcraft, Minecraft, just to name a few. One of the things that all these games have is the ability to online chat with strangers. So if the kids are going to be playing online, we do understand we can't stop them from playing online, nor do we want to. What we want is for them to be able to play safely and for their parents to know what things to look out for. So things that parents should be watching out for and kids should be watching out for is online strangers asking for personal information, asking kids to move to another platform such as Snapchat, Facebook, WhatsApp, all these other things that they can chat on, asking the kids to keep secrets. Hey, don't tell mom and dad I'm talking to you. Don't tell mom and dad we're moving to this other platform, and then wanting to meet in real life. So with talking with adults comes grooming. Oftentimes, the groomer will initiate and maintain sexual relations with victims in secrecy. They'll slowly overcome those natural boundaries long before abuse will actually begin. And then, a lot of the times, this looks like a false relationship between the offending adult or child, and if we're seeing this, like, locally, it will actually be the parents as well that are getting groomed. So some of the tactics that these online gamers are using is they're testing boundaries, they're joking, roughhousing, tickling, sexualized games. They're encouraging kids to break rules, asking kids to keep secrets, and a lot of the times, they'll use these secrets later on as blackmail against the kid. Communicating secretly, again, they're going to be moving to those other platforms so that if parents are monitoring the online chats, they don't see that they're still chatting on different platforms. And then intimidation, they're going to use fear, embarrassment, or guilt to keep the child from telling. Some signs that a kid might be getting groomed. The kid's secluded themselves, they're constantly bringing their phone into the bedroom, only wanting to be in their bedroom. Drastic changes in behavior, whether it's these drastic mood swings or just something very out of character for this child. And then sudden increase in materialistic items. Sometimes when somebody, a kid is getting groomed, they're buying them clothes, they're buying them toys, all these other things that maybe they didn't have before. So parents are starting to see an increase in packages coming to the house, or increasing, and maybe they pick out a new phone, and the parents weren't paying for it. And then the protecting of the phone where the kid doesn't want their parents to go through their phone whatsoever. For some reason, they think it's going to be hard for your child to report it to you. They're afraid that they're going to lose their online access and that they can't be trusted. They feel like an adult can't help them in the situation that they got in. Maybe they set a photograph of themselves or something, and they'll be blackmailed, so they're scared to report that. It's an awkward conversation for them to have, and they're also afraid that their parents won't be able to help them. So these are some parental resources for how to play online games safe, and then some really good online games that are out there. Any other questions?
So a lot of this is...
Yep.
About, or, a lot of the resolution to it is parents being interested in what their kids are doing, paying attention to what they're doing, and being nosy, not being a friend, but being an actual parent. So that's, this seems to be a lot of what can kind of curb a lot of this right from the get-go. And it might not be a parent that they go to, it might just be another trusted adult that they can go to and vent to. We did learn, when we gave this presentation on Saturday, that there's a couple entities in the city or within the area that aren't mandatory reporters, that embrace, if they go to them with certain things that they are not mandatory reporters, but then, like, foster parents or people like that that are. So that was something that I learned on Saturday.
You know, when I taught high school, we had in place, if they're, the first thing a lot of students would tell you, "Don't tell my parents." Then the second thing that we would discuss with them, you know, hey, I'm keeping it until you tell me what to do, but I need to have you tell somebody. So we had in place to tell the liaison officer in case of medical pregnancy or whatever, the school nurse. But at least they had somebody to go to, other than the teacher handling it themselves. I don't know if that's in place or not.
If all staff members are mandatory reporters.
Okay.
So they, they have to notify somebody.
Okay.
Sometimes it's administration, sometimes it's us. As long as they're not just kind of sitting on it and trying to handle it themselves, that's when further issues occur and add occurred.
When you presented this, so you presented at the library and then at the schools, too? Was it well attended and were there, no? Oh, that's so sad.
Each of the schools, we only had about two people for each of the presentations, but they were, like, the two parents that showed up were very engaged.
Awesome.
Like, at each of them, we had two at each, so six parents altogether. I think we ended up just chatting back and forth the entire presentation. And they were taking pictures, asking really good questions. And then the library, we probably had about 15 or less.
Oh, nice.
So this isn't something that all of our students have been, have seen? No?
There is one online.
Alright, um, just...
Initially, it was intended for parents, I think, initially, but yeah, keep going, sorry.
No, just, I mean, it's been in the news a lot lately. I mean, it's boys in particular that have been sextorted, I mean, and, and it's concerning for me because I have boys, and they're at that age, too, where they just don't underst- I mean, literally, these boys are killing themselves overnight because of what they've done, and they think it's, they can't fix it. So, I mean, I think it's something that all our students need to see and understand that it's not, there's never a situation that is, you know, so terrible that they have to resort to that.
Is there a way to do, like, some assemblies and whatnot to get it?
Certainly is, and I haven't seen the long-form version of this yet, but, I mean, I know, depending on questions and things like that, but the longer presentation, like at the library on Saturday, ballpark, I don't know, how long was the presentation? Okay, yeah, so it's not that, that long, but...
And I did present to, like, a eighth grade A O V A of alcohol and addiction today, and I did add sextortion in there.
Okay.
And I talked about, like, a lot of these times, they're getting threats, and I told them, I said, "You, you don't even be scared to report this to us, and you don't need to feel like this person's actually gonna..." I've never seen a sextortion case where the person has actually followed through with it.
Right, right.
And I was really trying to hear that at home with the kids.
Yeah.
They might be threatening you, but you need to come to an adult for help, so.
Yeah.
I do try to touch on it in other presentations, just because of how harsh it is.
Yeah, super sad.
Do you have any suggestions as to how we can help get the word out? And you're, you're doing these presentations, but we have some newsletters going out, I mean, we even have the Skyword site, is that appropriate?
And you said, you have a recorded version of this?
Yeah, we have the whole recording.
It was on our Facebook page? Okay. And, and we can easily send that out to, you know, anyone we want to.
Oh, send it out to the board, too. I'd like to see it, too.
That was a live recording of Phil doing it.
Or even the short version.
So the one that's recorded is the long version.
But it's half hour, give or take, or maybe even less, because they had no questions or anything, or if it was just, yep.
So we could think about the different ways that we communicate with the community, and just not put the whole presentation in there, but just little blurbs about how parents need to make sure they know what their kids are on, and they shouldn't have their computers in the bedroom where they're unmonitored, and things like that.
Yeah, because I, I know, our building administrators for sure get comments like that. You know, my son or daughter's just in their room all the time, and, and, you know, describing that exact scenario, and, you know, so that's not healthy. For, on a, on a number of fronts.
Just, it's a gaming and social media topic, I mean, you can almost lump a couple things into one when they're discussed, and...
Yep.
It's important for mental health.
The groups that were not required to notify, is there any plan to engage those groups to try to get them, if they're interacting with their kids?
So it's a lot of, like you say, that it was the embrace, that's more of they're a sexual self-advocate. So like, for whatever reason, they weren't part of that, like, state requirement that they have to report these things. Do they? Yes. And especially if, like, there's some physical harm or anything like that, but more on the lines of, you know, if they come to us with, you know, something like this, they're not required to, you know, to come to us like a staff member is or a teacher.
Do you guys do undercover stuff? I mean, not, maybe not you, but is there, within the state, people that are going online and...
So we actually have an investigator at Rice Lake Police Department that is Internet Crimes Against Children certified, and he does do undercover chats with perpetrators.
Yeah, well...
Well, the current chief of Cumberland, Heather Wolf, she did that, like, the sheer volume of people, that when she was pretending to be like a 14-year-old girl on there, that actually came here to meter that were arrested, it was absolutely mind-boggling, so.
What she worked for is, like, she actually got an Internet Crimes Against Children investigator of the year, so it is in this area.
Thank you.
No, thank you. We have a, a gaming club, that's, is that just board games, or that's some online gaming too, right?
There is, actually, my wife is one of the coaches for the esports group, and that is only, they don't, there's no chats allowed that aren't monitored. So any of those tournaments or any of the stuff like that is closely monitored, and it's, yeah.
And I, and I think that's with other high school kids in clubs, and gives her and other advisors a chance to talk about it, but, you know, if someone's at home at night, I mean, it would be anyone.
Right, but, but those kids that are doing that are obviously getting warnings in this type of presentation also, right? Or, I mean, do you...
Like, is Michelle talking about these kinds of things with kids?
I believe she, I can't, I don't...
That would seem to be a perfect opportunity to integrate this, at least for those kids.
Actually, it seems to not. We do have internet literacy, security, safety lessons, various places, like, so the library media specialists teach lessons, are, those classes teach lessons, are held in lots of places, it's embedded into the group.
They get a lot of it, it's just whether or not parents support it. You know, we only get that certain amount of time.
Right, right.
Well, I think the scammers, too, that target these kids just get smarter, because, you know, the initial threat was, you know, "Send me a picture, you know, then I'm going to show it to everybody you know," and, and then, and then it escalates to, "Well, you're going to go to prison, because I'm a 14-year-old girl," so they just get smarter and...
Yes.
Twisted.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for keeping it in the news.
Yeah.
Yes. Alright, next, we have the Child Development Day and 4K Enrollment Update.
Alright, back in February, we held our annual 4K enrollment event. This is a time when families can come, the children can be in one of our classrooms, and meet the teachers, and, and experience what a day might look like in a, a little snapshot. It's also a time where we can support families and help them to complete the enrollment for 4K for the upcoming school year for their child.
So as part of this event, we also do what's called our Child Fine. As a district, we are required to locate students with disabilities, and so we, when the, the students come in, they get their hearing checked, they get their vision checked, they also get to play and interact with our early childhood staff, as well as our speech-language pathologists, and they kind of just do a little observation. If they feel like maybe their speech is not quite where it needs to be, we'll connect, you know, we'll talk to the parents and talk about potential referrals and get that process started. So this year, we, with the moving of our 4K to Hilltop next year, we did an event at both locations. So we had the evening event at Hilltop, and then Friday during the day was at Tainer Elementary. So Thursday night, we were open from 6:30, 3:45 to 7:30, and then, again, 7:00, 8:30 to 11:30 at Tainer. We promoted this through various events, social media, postcard flyers, Katie Wick was busy getting that sent out to everybody. It takes a lot of people to, to host and run this event. We had numerous staff there, but also Baron, we also invite Baron County Birth to Three. They work with children in our community of students with disabilities from the age of birth to three, so it's a nut time for parents bringing children that young to also get assessed by the Birth to Three staff. And then Public Health helped us out with our audiology and the hearing test this year. So we also gave them little goodie bags when they leave, they get, you know, little toy, information about 4K, about our summer academy, and then just some fun toys for the kid, and they all walk out with a book as well.
We had good attendance again this year, as we often do. Forty-nine children came Thursday night at Hilltop. That was a very busy evening, yes, but everyone was very happy. The Hilltop families were very happy to be coming to Hilltop School and knowing that their child will be going to 4K at Hilltop. And then Friday, 20 children came that morning. So 69 children in all. Last year, it was 64, so a little, little larger number, which was good. Just a little promotion here, 4K enrollment is open. If you know of any four-year-olds, soon-to-be four-year-olds, any families, encourage those families to enroll their children now. Enroll now, enroll now, yeah. We, we do have enrollment coming in, lots of notices have gone out, but we're still trying to find more. So some that we have on our census who aren't enrolled yet, and there's probably some other families out there that we don't even know about yet, so help us get the word out if you're listening online.
And I know going to the, if I could just say, going to the all-day format next year, I know, and families could only bring their child for half the day, but I forget the percentage, or if you happen in Old Off-Talk, but it's like 90-some.
98% of the family said, "Sign up my kid for the full day." I think two out of, well, I wrote down, two out of 45 who have enrolled at Hilltop are, will be picking up their child midday, or dropping off midday. And all but four who have signed up so far at Tainer said they want the child to stay all day, so it was a very popular...
Very popular option.
Offering, yeah, families were very excited about it.
Are we still working on the wraparound?
We are, that's offered, and we did share information about that for the after-school day wraparound care, so we plan to offer that at both sites. We will need to have enrollment to warrant staffing that, but that is our hope, that we will have enough families to offer to both sites.
Some of the families are...
Some have indicated interest yet, and we'll do some more promoting on that as, as that gets closer to... Alright.
Just lastly, a quick thank you to all the staff and people that helped out. As you can see, there's quite a few people that were there both eve, that evening and the next day, staffing different rooms. The kids kind of bopped from one room to the next, and I think they all had a good time, so...
Lots of smiles.
Lots of smiles. They, they go there in place, so it's good. Any questions?
Great.
Alright, hey, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have proclamation for Military Child Month. April 1st through the 30th is the month for the military child, and I would entertain a motion to proclaim Military Child Month from April 1st to the 30th. So moved. Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? See none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it has been proclaimed, April 1st through the 30th, Military Child Month. Alright, next, we have the 2025 Academic Excellence Scholarships and Technical Excellence Scholarships. This is an action item. Every year, we have these opportunities for our students. The Academic Excellence, that one is, that one is through the four-year colleges, and then the Technical Excellence is the technical colleges. So with that, is there any questions? We've got two recipients and, well, a recipient and an alternate. No?
Make sure it's...
Two, yeah.
Can we share names, or...
Mm-hmm. You wanna?
Yeah.
So on the Academic Excellence, we've got, our primary recipients are John Gruden and Pierce, Grunden, and Pierce Haslam Treger. And then on the Technical Excellence, the primary recipients are Cameron Coons and Nathan Vander Snaden. So with that, I would entertain a motion to approve those...
I'd just like to mention that Nathan Vander Zand is one of my most active young chamber ambassadors, and I'm proud that he's on here.
Alright, entertain a motion to approve those recipients. So moved. Has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? See none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And they have been approved. Next, we have our preliminary staff and report, second reading.
Yeah. And so with that, I just wanted to add, you know, as compared to the current year, we have six people retiring that at this point in time, just looking at our budget, and we have declining enrollment, 75 to 80% of the districts in Wisconsin do. And so with that, we have six positions retiring that at this time, we do not plan to fill. Also, we have another three and a half positions where people have planned to leave at the end of the year, and we're not planning to fill those, but there may be a little bit of, for instance, the 4K piece, our 4K enrollment is, is trending up, and so we may need to bring a half a position back there due to enrollment, due to enrollment, which is a good thing, but overall, as of today, down about nine and a half positions. But again, that's primarily due to declining enrollment. Most of those are at the elementary where people retired, and we will not be replacing them.
Alright, with that, I would entertain a motion to approve that staffing report.
I would move to...
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? See none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the staffing, preliminary staffing report has been approved. Next, we have our Wire Connection Committee meeting update.
Okay, so we met as an entire committee on Wednesday, March 26th. We proved the minutes and so on, and then we got updates from the Data Collection Subcommittee and the Area of Action Subcommittee. So those two committees are meeting at separate times. April 3rd, the Area of Action Subcommittee met, and that includes Mark Byce, Randy Dross, Phil Henkel, Josh Tomes, and Tanya Jensen. And at that time, they reviewed the goals of the Subcommittee, they discussed topics from the Wire Connections Committee meeting, and one of their goals is to develop a partnership between Rice Lake High School and the Rice Lake Middle School leadership teams. They also, there was an update from Mark Byce and Tanya Jensen. Basically, what they're doing is they're going out and sharing our plans or discussing ways to connect with the kids and the staff, or I guess how the staff can connect with the kids more so. And then there was discussion on activities that they can have. Do you have anything to add for that, Phil, on the Area of Action Subcommittee?
Not really too much, just that I think we're working toward prioritizing a list of suggestions that we want to bring for action pretty soon.
Does, this committee has a sunset at some point?
Yeah, at some point, yes. And then the Data Collection Subcommittee also met on April 8th, and present was Adam Beaver, Nellie Shire, myself, Belinda Sernick, and Susan Franco. At that time, we heard from Adam Beaver, he's been working with students and groups collecting data, and Belinda is also, Belinda Sernick is going to be helping him to work together to interview students. Our hope was that beginning on April 14th, that the high school staff could meet with students. I'm not sure if they actually did that, though, because they also had the YRBS today, so they were hoping to meet with students at the last 30 minutes of homeroom, but I'm not sure if they were able to, but that is their plan, to meet with students, interested in talking about ways to improve the, the climate, and to bring about more community involvement in the school. So that will either happen today or will be happening, I'm not sure. And also, they just discussed ways that they can meet with staff and get ideas of ways to connect with the kids. Our next Subcommittee meeting's May 6th, our next overall meeting for the Wire Connections Committee meeting is April 23rd. Our next overall meeting for the Wire Connections Committee meeting is April 23rd at 7:00 AM.
Any questions? All right, thank you for that update. Next, we have our Finance Committee meeting update, where we have several action items. We'll attack those as we go through them, Doug, when you get to them.
All right.
But before we get to that point, we do have one that we're going to table until our next meeting, and that is the 25, 26 busing rates. So I would entertain a motion to table that action item until next meeting. Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? See none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Okay, Doug.
All right. Yes, we met on Thursday, April 10th at 8:30 in the morning. All members were present, approved the minutes, and moved into the updated retirement language. We approved changes to the handbook to make it compliant and add new language to support for support staff and salaried employees hired after July 1st of 2024. We'll be discussing the retirement handbook language for staff prior to July 1st of 2024 during the next year or so, to bring back some potential recommended changes to the full board again at that point in time. So just to let everybody know that, that we're really not changing anything in its entirety right now, but that there will be potential changes coming down in the near future to give staff ample time to look at potential options that they would have and may like to pursue. We looked, and the committee is recommending approval to using an HRA vendor as part of the process with the updated retirement language that we needed to do to implement those changes. And the district's retiree HRA account for the annual of $1,700 and $500 for the contributions. We reviewed the county building lease, and I don't know, Randy, did you want to kind of give a summary as to what we're doing with the county?
You bet. And, and you have a document at your place, just, and I know I shared this with one Subcommittee, honestly, I don't remember which one, maybe it was Buildings and Grounds. But just as we talk about the, the buildings on the campus, you know, one is a student center, which, you know, pending approval, we would take over, and with that, we would plan to start a childcare center in that building. Have met with, and in here, I said Dave Armstrong, twice, met with him twice recently in totality, have probably met with him a half a dozen times throughout this in his role as Executive Director of Barron County Economic Development Corporation, that, that side of his life. And he has repeatedly said, you know, any childcare centers that are in the area, they have waiting lists, so all of Barron County has been designated as a childcare desert. And, you know, if this moves forward, we would serve infants up to the time that students are able to go to kindergarten, because at that time, then, they can go to Boys and Girls Clubs of Barron County, who's going to have a new facility. And so with that, that's the, the age range we would be looking to serve, would anticipate the center to be open, and again, this is preliminary, but, you know, 6:00 AM to 5:30 PM. And there, I gave the rough costs of, of what childcare centers in the area are, are currently charging, about 210 to 225 in that neighborhood, for instance, infants and toddlers, and around $190 for older students. Plan timeline, should this move ahead, we'd need two to three months to design and draw up documents, another four to six weeks for state approval, potentially start remodeling in September, and potentially take occupancy early next year. And it's important to note, this would have no impact on our regular Fund 10 operating budget, and our, our hope would be to break even. And in looking at the projected financials for this, I give people who run childcare centers credit. I think in my earlier years, I was naive and thought they maybe made money hand over fist. They are not. So it's, it's a challenging business to be in, but one that I know, you know, we get asked about a lot, hear a lot from our own staff even, let alone businesses, and it's something we, we feel would, would make our community better. Looking also potentially, looking at taking one of the new classrooms, and this would be a, a short-term piece, but at Hilltop Elementary to get started this summer, maybe taking one of those rooms and offering 3K childcare until the, the center would get up and running as a, as a way to continue to work on it. When you move over to the gymnasium side, gym space is, is within the school district and the community is, is always at their premium. For instance, I know Lori Leaf, Athletic Director at the middle school, for middle school athletics alone, they're always using, you know, the two gyms at the middle school as well as Hilltop Elementary. At the high school level, we've been using the, the college gymnasium for a few years at least, for different practices and clinics and camps. And it's also currently used by community groups, and the pickleball group has a, a strong presence there. And I know, in, in talking with Abby Fisher, they would need a few, a handful of hours per week for classes, and, and there are community events there, like, you know, Men's Club Wine Tasting has had a history of, I don't know, 25 or more years of, of being there. And so we would, we would want to continue to work with groups as much as possible. Couple of other pieces, you know, the county has committed to putting new roofs on both buildings that are in need of it. Overall, the buildings are in great shape, but they need new roofs. The county is taking care of that cost. Also, in a conversation with Jeff French, you know, talking about the, the heating piece, like, I don't know if you remember, sometime this winter, or maybe it was last fall, a couple of articles in the Cronotype about, you know, their underground lines being compromised down the line a little ways, and some potential issues there, and Jeff confirmed, he said, with the county buildings, the county would take care of that. He said, right now, they're investigating placing individual standalone boilers at each building, and taking a look at that. And he said that would be the, the county's responsibility, and so would have new roofs, and, and the heating is responsibility of the county. So, and then also included in that, just a rough layout of the building, the student center. As far as a childcare center, you know, upstairs would be infants, three and four-year-olds, four and five-year-olds. Downstairs would be, you know, the two and a half to three, and two to two and a half, and one to two-year-olds. And then just included documentation, just if you care to read, you know, like things on the, on the ratios, for instance, and square footage and things like that you need for a childcare center. So.
Any questions?
Then I thought about ventilation. Is ventilation going to be adequate for all those kids in there in all the little rooms?
That'll be, that's, the HVAC renovations are included as a part of that. Yes, you would, you would have to ensure that that's taken care of. And we're already starting to work with a couple of individuals who are responsible for childcare centers in this area to start addressing those things.
Any other questions?
Randy, we would probably have to hire someone to manage that, I would assume.
Yep, we would have a childcare center director, you bet. Yes, that'd be a position just like any other district position, we would post for and take applications and work through the interview process, you bet.
And I just was reading in the paper that some of the county supervisors were a little nervous about giving us too good of a deal on this, because they thought we were going into a money-making operation here. Can you assure people that?
I can, I can assure people. Like I said, the best-case scenario, if you're completely full and have all the right staffing ratios, like take babies, for instance, it's one to four. You know, so if you have five babies, you need two people. And so optimally, everything maxed out, everything perfect numbers-wise, you're about breaking even. That's about it. And that's as, as we've dug into that, and Victor has experience doing the same thing in both Luck and Prairie Farm, when he worked at CISA, and yeah, he, he had a few "I told you so" moments as we, as we worked through the finance pieces of it. Yes, I can, I can assure you, this is not going to be a huge moneymaker for the district. You know, I've said before, I think many of you feel the same way. To me, it's more about helping our community in some of the other projects we have going on. It's about making the Rice Lake community and the Rice Lake area school district, and yeah, selfishly talk about the school district, we have to, but it's making things better. The writing is on the wall for Northwest Wisconsin, there's going to be less kids, we're going to have an older population over the course of the next 20, 30 years. We need to do things to either attract people to come here, or maybe people went to school here and moved away, maybe they lived for a while, and now they want to come back to Rice Lake because it's a great place to raise a family. We have to have some amenities for those people. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And I think it is important to let our public know that if the facility is not making money, and it is losing money, that that is not coming out of the general fund from the school district that is operated off of a separate fund that has nothing to do with our general fund, so will not affect teacher placements and having to do cuts with our general fund, because it will not draw from that. So with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the agreement.
So moved.
And has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? See none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
All right, the next item on our agenda was the Boys and Girls Club, and we reviewed that lease and are recommending moving forward with approval of that as well.
Do we have any questions on that contract?
Is your computer not working? We got it. Okay, I'm sharing.
Anybody have any questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve that agreement.
So moved.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? See none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that agreement has been approved.
All right, and then we tabled the, we had a discussion about the bus rates, but we are having further discussions and looking at options with the bus company on that. And then we discussed the usage rates for community groups and what the new pool are going to look like in rates and hours and, and rates and so forth. Then we reviewed the, and approved the bills, and scheduled our next meeting for Thursday, May 8th.
Doug, do you need us to take action on the pool hours and rates?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was going to make a motion.
I would entertain a motion to approve the pool hours and rates that was in our board packet.
I would make that motion. Sorry, I was early.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
You are the vice president, Don, it's okay.
Filling my, fulfilling my destiny.
Yeah, thanks.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion carries.
And then just for anybody listening or watching, just, and I know you heard it, have heard it before, too, but the pool is going to be open, you know, roughly twice as many hours as, as the old one was. And so it's going to be a great facility, and we want people to have access.
Yes. It's getting close. The tile is going on the walls on the second pool. Making progress. All right. And the first reading on the employee handbook update on the retirement language, that was in our board packet as well. So make sure you read through that, and then that'll come back for a second reading. Any questions? If not, we will go to Diane on the Curriculum Committee meeting update.
Okay, thank you. We met on Tuesday, March 25th, and all members were present. We approved the meeting minutes of February 25th. And then we just had two agenda items. First of all, we had a report from Marcia and Natalie Springer regarding the Summer Academy. So they kind of explained how that was going and gave us the dates. I'll just give you a few highlights on that. Session one will run from June 16 through 19, and then June 23 through 26. And session two, July 28 through 31, and then August 4 through 7. And just a reminder, this year, it will just be Monday through Thursday. It will not have Summer Academy on Fridays, and the hours will be 8:00 AM to 11:45. A couple of new things this year for offerings was, they're going to have a biking program and a tennis camp. So I'm sure that will have a lot of interest. And then the other new thing is they're going to offer lunch, and that will be at both Hilltop and the middle school. They're also working on plans for drop-offs and pickups, trying to just coordinate how that's all going to work with parents bringing their children and picking them up and dealing with the transportation. I don't think that's all ironed out yet. As far as discipline, Josh Tomesh and Lori Leaf will be responsible for discipline at the middle school, and Natalie Springer's going to handle Hilltop. She's going to have her hands full. Another thing that is very helpful is Boys and Girls Club are going to be assisting with getting kids to summer school from their programs, so we thank them for doing that. Registration is going on now through May 9th, and I'm wondering if Marcia has any update on registration numbers for us tonight.
You don't have specifics, but registration is coming in, it'll close in May 9th. A lot of our cousins are filling up, but there's still spaces in those.
Thank you, Marcia. Then the second item that we discussed was enrollment and staffing updates. Most of that everyone has heard through Randy's report, and then Marcia and Lori tonight speaking to us more about the enrollment regarding kindergarten and 4K. But there are just a couple of points of interest I thought I would point out that you may not know about, and that is at the 4K level. I was told in March, and maybe it's changed since, that we have six students in the Hoggan area, and that is not enough to have 4K there next year. I believe Marcia said that one is even now open, enrolled to Barron, so we need more Hoggan students to enroll, or we're going to have an ongoing problem there. Because that means if there's, if we don't have enough students for 4K this year, then there won't be enough for kindergarten the following year, and then first grade the next year, and so on. So it presents quite a challenge for Hoggan's future, and so please have more children in Hoggan, we need you.
And Diane, I can, I can update that. We've had three at this time interested in Hoggan, three, maybe four, but...
Okay.
Four? No. Three total.
Three total. Okay.
Three total, okay. Yeah, so, and that's all I have as far as staffing. Our next meeting is tomorrow night at 5:30.
Nice.
Any questions? Thank you. Next, we have the Compensation Committee meeting update.
All right. So we met Wednesday, April 9th at 5:30. Present was Andrew Cobb, Brett Richards, Nellie, and myself, and also Randy and Victor. Basically, we just went over, well, first, we nominated a Compensation, Compensation Committee Chairperson, and I was nominated.
And accepted.
Yes, thank you. And, right, I know. So we reviewed a draft proposal for teachers and support staff compensation for the 2025-2026 school year. This is something that we've been working on for a while, but we just went ahead and reviewed it for the new members. We also went over items from the Handbook Committee, just things that were proposed by them, and just, we discuss them as a committee, and we will discuss them with the full board. Did you want to go over that now or no?
Yeah, I can, if you're okay with that.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah. But, so, yeah, this is just the slide. There it's coming. Just the slide deck from that portion of the meeting. And for any staff that may be watching, we'll do a board update this week. I'm sorry, staff update this week as well and send this out. But this was just a reminder, our teacher compensation used to be, you know, a two lane process. Created lots of issues over time, especially as we hired new staff and where they were placed. And so several years ago, we went, for any math aficionados, basically went to a linear, linear function approach where we take $1,500 times the number of years, added in the starting pay and then, you know, up to, up to a certain amount. And this current year was the third and final year of a process where we leveled everyone out based on their total number of years of teaching. And so we knew actually that the total increase moving forward would be less. But as a board, you committed to adding to that for the last three years. And so we're at this place. So for next year, we would advocate for, again, a person's salary would be, if they had a bachelor's degree, $1,500 times the number of years. This $42,000, that's our base starting salary on a bachelor's scale. So moving that from $41.5 to $42,000 and then upping the top by $1,500 as well. When someone comes in or earns either a master's or a national boards, that's an additional $3,000 for them and then up to that amount, which was $1,500 higher. And then if someone had a master's and a national boards, it's pretty rare. But, you know, they would be another $2,000 higher. So we were just promoting, recommending moving along that, that same line. And I know there's some uncertainty with the state budget, but we feel pretty good about where we're going to be at. When you look at a total dollar figure there, it's just under $400,000. Ends up being a 2.963. It was higher than that the last few years, but that was with that evening out process. So, and we looked at this afterwards, but CPI for this year is at 2.95%. So basically it's at 3% overall. And then when we looked at support staff, you, let me jump to. So this was this current year, you've seen this grid before. One second. You've seen this grid before where someone is hired and it looks like they're frozen at the same salary for three years. They're not because every year we keep making increases to each cell. And so this is what it looked like for 24, 25. We just took that same, the, the 3% on the teacher side and applied it to each cell. So there's 24, 25, and I can send this to you individually. Applied it to, come on, all right. Applied it to 25, 26. And so it just added a straight 3% across the board on every cell, including the end of the year meets expectations bonus on their evaluation. So we were looking at that. And then, yeah, with that, and then that financial impact, again, at a 3% was about $149,000. And then as we, just as more, just a reminder, some, a few years ago, we tied basically everything to the base teacher salary. And because there were things like curriculum pay and summer school pay and some of those things were kind of nebulous. So we tied them to the base teacher salary as well as like, you know, middle school athletics. High school athletics was already tied to that. Co-curricular and extracurricular clubs, they're all tied to that now. So as that base increases, so do those other pieces. And so that, that was a, that was a great move because I know like, for instance, I was a middle school wrestling coach almost 30 years ago. The, the pay was the same pretty much for almost three decades. And so, and then there's longevity pay in those situations as well. And then cash in lieu of health insurance, there is, we do provide an amount for that in the district. And the recommendation is to offer that to all benefit eligible employees, meaning if they qualify for health insurance, they qualify for that benefit. And then there are a couple of other pieces that Miriam mentioned. I mean, you already heard tonight about the HRA contribution for, you know, teachers hired prior to, I'm sorry, after July 1, 2024. And then support staff also providing an amount for them of $500 a year in an HRA. We did have a request from support staff members that, you know, we can talk about more of us to make that the same for everyone. And that, yeah, that's my last slide. So with those kind of a recaps, thanks, Miriam.
Yes, thank you. So then we moved into closed session at 6:24 and moved back into open session at 6:43 and no other action was taken. And our next meeting is to be determined.
Any questions? All right. Thank you for that report. Next, we have our second reading of the Policy and Legislative Advocacy Committee. The policies that were brought forward at our last meeting with the rules and exhibits. Does anybody have any questions or comments? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve those policies, rules and exhibits.
Move to approve the policies and exhibits as presented.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And they have been approved. Next, we have the April 1st school board election results. That is in our board packet. Congratulations to all of our winners, including Lori. Welcome. And any questions on that? Doug did a good job certifying and canvassing all of that.
Had big shoes to fill.
I know. I'm sorry.
And one knee.
How big are her shoes?
Sort of a canvas shirt.
All right. Next, we have the WASB Public Policy Correspondent Update.
There are weekly Capitol chats now. One on April 4th wasn't too earth shattering. I know some of you think none of them are. They're informational. One item that was mentioned, it's sort of an ongoing thing, is changes in Washington or may affect the way some of the funding is conveyed from the feds to the local school district. The budget is moving through Washington through the reconciliation process, which again means that the Senate passes one version, the House passes the other. If they're not identical, they have to reconcile them by going through that process. It takes 51 votes in the Senate, so avoids the filibuster. So that's moving forward a little bit and people are wondering whether funding is going to be reduced or not. We don't know. The official word is that funding is supposed to be, some of it sent back to the states and some funding that's critical has been moved to other departments or will be. So we'll just have to see how that works out. The Department of Education that continues to exist in Washington right now has pushed back against some states that have interpreted Title VI, the 1964 Civil Rights Act in a way that they can use DEI to discriminate in hiring practices. And the DOE wants the DPI in Wisconsin to certify, and probably some other states too, to certify that school districts are not practicing discrimination, particularly racial discrimination in their hiring practices. And the DPI is pushing back against that. You might have heard in the news, Jill Underley has emphasized that she wants DPI to be, continue to be used here. So there's going to be a little back and forth there. Usually the feds win that battle. And another issue where the current Department of Education sent a letter asking chief school officers to, and superintendents to clarify that information is not being withheld from parents under the FERPA Act. I can never quite remember what that stands for. Family, something educational, Rights and Privacy Act. There we go, thank you. I was waiting for Bert to jump in there too.
He knows. He loves the mnemonics, yes.
But it wasn't related to fishing, so. And the reason for that is some states have passed laws saying that you can re, and their DPIs have passed policies that school districts can withhold information from parents under certain circumstances. And the notable one is if children want to transition their name and gender, that can be withheld from parents. And our current Department of Education wants the education establishments to certify that information will not be withheld from parents. So we'll see what happens with that. Then moving on to the state. There has, a bill has been moving rapidly through the legislature. It has been passed in the assembly and is moving to the floor of the Senate, requiring schools to prohibit the use of wireless communications during instructional time. Well, we're kind of ahead of the game on there, so I won't elaborate on that. There are various exceptions. WASB is neutral on that. And WASB has actually worked with them to try to make it workable. And because WASB says that the legislature has made good faith attempts to make it workable, WASB is neutral on that. There is a public hearing for an assembly bill, which is kind of interesting. The bill would require higher education establishments to furnish data usable by high school counselors, provided juniors and seniors for academic and career planning into the Higher Educational AIDS Board regarding the cost and debt burden and benefits, basically, of higher education. And some of the things they would like to track is the average salary of college graduates six months after graduation and then again, five years after graduation in aggregate and by major. The average debt at graduation, the graduation rate in aggregate and by major. The average total cost for graduating from an institution for a degree, the available financial aid and the 10 most popular degree programs in each institution in a format so that it can be easily compared between institutions. And if this would go through, it would be information that would be provided to high school juniors and seniors in the 27, 28 year. So that's interesting, but we'll see where that goes. I wonder if we'll get through the governor's office, even if it gets through the legislature. Referenda. Maybe you, you all know about this, but there were 81 referendums in 81 districts and 89 questions. 52 of the 89 questions passed, which was 58.4%, which was down from 70 some percent back in November, I believe. Capital referenda passed more frequently than operational referenda. And non-recurring referenda passed much more frequently, about the same as the general passage rate, 58.5%. There were five recurring referenda and only one of those passed, which some of you may recognize as a 20% passage rate. So that is my report. I hope you found it as, at least as interesting as usual. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you for that. Upcoming meeting schedule. There's a number of webinars that are available. There's one tomorrow, another one on Wednesday, April 16th. Capitol Chat on April 25th. And a couple more as we get into the end of April. There is one that I'd like to point out. There's a WASB new board member gathering over at CISA 11. For Lori and Andy, you were on after they did the one last spring. So that is next Tuesday. So if you can attend that, let Colleen know and I'll take the time off and we'll head over to CISA and take in that meeting if that'll work. So that is the upcoming meeting schedule. Next, we have one of the best parts of our meeting where we get to hear from our students. Sam, this isn't going to be the last one, is it? You're going to come back next month, right?
It might be my last one.
Oh, no, no, no.
It might be.
You gotta come back one, one more time.
We'll see, we'll see. So we had a Word Leadership Team meeting about a week ago and talked about kind of remaining year and how we want to move forward within the next year. So we kind of celebrated our events that we hosted. We had a food drive in conjunction with the Big Rivers Conference. It was a, each school, it was a school v. school competition to try to have a food drive. We have a homeroom activity on Wednesday, so the freshmen and sophomores will be doing pre-ACT testing. We'll be at school and so we wanted to plan homeroom activity for them. The seniors will be doing community service that day. There was a WASC State Conference. I did not go, that was for juniors. As you can see, there are no juniors present to talk about that said conference, so I apologize.
Slackers.
Yep. We will be looking at having some bonfires as the weather, attempts to get nicer outside and we'll make the best of that, probably either the end of April or beginning of May. We also talked about a movie night, utilizing the scoreboard outside if they can figure out how to make it work. And a few other things. So the state conference, it was schools from all over Wisconsin and the juniors got back some really good feedback for how to run not only student government, but meetings and how to be more efficient and to be better leaders. Again, can't really say too much on that, but they said it was a great conference and they brought back some really good ideas in our Friday meeting. That bonfire usually is accompanied with grilling. Last year happened to fall on like the day of a baseball and soccer game, I think. So there was quite a few people that just kind of lingered. Got to serve the Hudson baseball team some hot dogs on the way out. Kind of felt bittersweet because they beat us badly, but that's okay. I believe, so we've, a few weeks ago, we gave the administrative ladies, the secretaries in the school building, flowers and a gift card in appreciation for all that they do. Earlier this year, we gave crossing guards some donuts and hot chocolate. And I believe we were looking at the lunch staff ahead to celebrate them and all the amazing work they do. Senior letters, we're going to have senior members of the Word Leadership Team meeting, or Word Leadership Team, write letters to a, an educator, doesn't have to be from high school, as a kind of thanks, a gratitude for his last 12 years and to try to give, give back some appreciation for all that they do. As far as next year goes, we want to be a bit more structured with the Word Leadership Team. It's very hard. Really the only teachers that are running it are Mr. Schradl. And Mr. Thurston and Mr. Zuzik help out. They're more prioritized with the seniors and the class reps. And so there gets to be a lot of things to do and a lot of kids to manage for Mr. Schradl. And so we're looking at kind of hammering down a guideline, almost a constitution of when you sign up, responsibilities and standards to be upheld, kind of revised from this year. And also looking to have more connection, I think it was brought up earlier, with the middle school and the other schools to kind of promote school pride. So when they come to high school, they're excited to participate in school events and not just find, or find assemblies to be an early dismissal date. That's kind of it. There'll be more details hopefully in the next meeting. I may or may not be here, we'll see.
Sam, did you guys have a blood?
We did, we did. We had, we had a smaller blood drive and we actually managed to reach a threshold for a second scholarship. I believe.
Congratulations.
I believe the scholarship fund's up to $1,400 at this time. Not for certain on the number, but we did, yes. We was in March. We was in March.
We did say they were just applying more board members, didn't it come to the blood check?
I gave blood out my knee, I think.
Just because you have one knee doesn't mean you can't donate.
All right, Sam, for you next year.
All right. Thank you for that report. Any questions? I'm Sam. I'm in the hot seat for as long as he's not coming back next, next month.
We'll see.
All right. All right, thank you for that update. Randy, District Administrator comments?
Yeah, just a few things and the and the things I'm going to mention are also found on our our district Facebook page. Please encourage people to go to there. And Aaron also does that at the beginning of each week. Here's some of the highlights of things coming up. You click on that link, it takes you to a calendar of of everything in the district going on. But River Deck Nature Conservancy kind of a grand opening Friday, May 16th, 4 to 6 p.m. Reminder to everyone, Sam, I know you're going to be sad, no school on Friday this week. And on Wednesday, are you seniors in community service?
Yes, so we will be doing that. We'll get back to school about noon and have lunch and then we are off after that.
Yeah, so freshmen and sophomores take the pre ACT, right? Is that what it's called now?
You'll have a whole day to work on that letter, Sam.
Yep.
Okay, that's all right.
And some other things, this was this weekend, but Forensics competed this past weekend at state and they won 10 medals. I must say, that's the only thing in high school I regret not doing was joining Forensics. Things about prom, prom and post-prom coming up on Saturday, April 26th. And with that, there's also every year, we have our DC or eighth graders have the opportunity to go on a DC trip. I was able to go on it once. It's a, it's a great trip. There's a spaghetti fundraiser Thursday, May 8th from 5 to 8 at the Masonic Lodge. So purchase tickets at the door if you happen to know an eighth grader that's plans to go, you can purchase tickets from from them as well.
Any questions? Thank you for that. Now, I would entertain a motion to convene a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.851F. That is for the approval of our closed session meeting minutes on Monday, March 24th. And our second item is statutes 19.851E and that's individual employee contract.
Motion to walk close.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Miriam Barbara.
Eric.
Richard.
Yes.